All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome. I could tell it was about that time when everybody just got very, very quiet, so I really appreciate that. I'm calling the Monday, January 27, 2025 Education Operations Committee meeting to order. Agenda item two, I'm seeking a motion to approve the minutes of December 16, 2024.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And today, the agenda item three, we have Rib Mountain Principal Rachel Jean will give a brief update on the exciting things happening at Rib Mountain Elementary and along with a lot of others here. Looking forward to it. You make them? Absolutely.
Okay. We have a crew here tonight. Yes. So, hi, my name is Rachel Jean, and I am the new principal at Rib Mountain Elementary School. And I'm really excited to be here tonight with the team from the school. I have two teachers with me, Mrs. Hartman and Mrs. Albee, as well as four students. So, we're going to share some of the work that we are doing at Rib. Tonight, we're going to talk about our goals for the school year, what we hope to achieve as a building, a little bit about our plans that we've developed to reach those goals, and then, most importantly, what impact has this plan and these goals had already on students. So, let's dive into our goals for the school year. As a building, we're really focused on three main goals. We looked at our data from both academic and MRA/SL data, and we identified three main goals where we want to see growth in our building. Number one, we want to increase literacy growth, we want to increase student empowerment and leadership, and we want to increase intentional communication between our stakeholders. And tonight, what we're really going to zoom into is that second goal of increasing student empowerment and leadership. We really want students to leave Rib seeing themselves as leaders and seeing themselves as making a difference in the community that they're in. Our motto for this year is "It's Your Life, So Lead It." And I really think that this encompasses that mission of having every student be a leader and see their potential in changing the culture and the climate of the school. So, I want to talk a little bit about our plans for how we're going to achieve that goal. And I have Mrs. Hartman, who is going to share a little bit about how every child is a leader at Rib. Regardless of whether you're in elementary, in kindergarten, or fifth grade, you have a role as a leader.
All right. So, because we believe that every student has genius and leadership skills, we are aiming to reinforce the motto here that every child is a leader at Rib Mountain. So, this year, we have worked with each grade level in an area of leadership within our school culture. And each grade level is responsible for assessing how to make a certain aspect of the school improved. So, we have a couple of slides here. Kindergarten is working on being responsible for cleaning up the balls after recess. First grade is in charge of making sure that the lunch process works smoothly and all lunch baskets get returned to classrooms. Second grade works with our kindergarten students on working on something called Smart Tracks, which is really a brain-building activity, which then eventually leads into improved academic success. Third grade is welcoming students in the morning by friendly hellos. And we'll get to fourth and fifth grade here in just a minute. But then, with all of these different aspects of the school, that particular grade is responsible for, with student input of kind of developing new ideas, or how can they make that certain aspect of the school even better? So, just giving them ownership and helping kids to recognize that they too can have an impact. But new this year, for fourth and fifth grade, we've started something even more developed, developed aspect of leadership, and that is what we call lead time. All students in fourth and fifth grade are placed on a specific leadership team. Some of them are listed on the slide. Students might assist in younger classrooms as mentors, they might report on school news through a newsletter, or on our videoed Mustang News Report. They might develop ways to show appreciation for volunteers, or even market unique opportunities and items in our Mustang Market. So, our belief is that through lead time this year, which is student-driven and student-inspired, these teams aim to make Rib Mountain an even better place with their own input, suggestion, and leadership.
This is Hartman. And this is Mrs. Albee, who's going to be talking to you about Genius Hour.
Yeah. So, Rib Mountain is in our second year of having Genius Hour, which has the premise that everyone has genius and everyone can be a leader, so it's right in with our, with our goals. We have lots of staff members, family members, community members, even board members. Ms. Sarah Brock has volunteered and helped us out this year to, they join us to showcase what their talents are, what are their passions, what's their genius. We have things like weather, music, art, theater, computer coding, health and wellness areas, lots of different areas. And then, the students get to choose which areas they want to explore, what do they feel passionate about, maybe they don't know yet, so they're just exploring different ideas. We just finished up three sessions, so they get to do it for three months in a row, once a month, and we're going to start it again in February with a new round. And we can't thank the volunteers enough. Some of them are listed, gosh, I hope most of them are. And, you know, we even have high school students who come down from Wausau West, and they share their time and talent with us because they have genius, they are leaders, and what a great connection we're building. We, our youngest learners and our oldest, it's great for all of them. We had a photography group come from West, a foreign language, and singers. It's a great building morale type, great culture thing. It's been amazing to have them all join us, and open invitation for anyone listening. If you have a genius you'd like to share, just reach out to us, Mrs. Jean, and we'll put you to work.
Thank you so much. So, these are some of the things that we have been working on as a building to really grow and empower students to be leaders. Lastly, I really want to talk about our impact, because it's so important to know, are initiatives having an impact on students? And so, I'm going to share some quantitative and qualitative data that shows the impact. Students take the MRA, which is a social-emotional learning survey in spring, but we really wanted to check in, how are we doing at this, at these goals towards leadership mid-year? And so, we surveyed the students, and I thought this was a powerful piece of data. Eighty-six percent of students at our school responded favorably to the statement, "Students at this school get to help plan or lead school events and activities." And that's just such a testament to the work that we've been doing and that students see their role in leadership. The second piece of data I want to share with you is that eighty-seven percent of the students on that survey also responded favorably to the statement, "I feel like a valuable part of this school," which is really all of our goals as educators, to make sure that students feel part of their community and making an impact every single day. So, that was really exciting to see on those survey results. So, that's the quantitative. The qualitative, I would like to share a couple quotes from students, since I can't have the whole student body here. I was able to, we came close, no. I was able to survey a couple students and just get their impact statement on what their leadership role has had. And so, you can see some of those statements. One of my favorite ones was a second grader told me, "I really like to tell kindergartners good job." And so, that was really sweet. Also, a second grader sharing that he gets to help in his brother's classroom and help cheer him on. And so, it's been really neat to see those relationships form across the school and not just in one school, or one grade level. Now, for the part we've all been waiting for, I also have some students here with me, and I met with these students, and they each have a leadership role in the school. And so, they're going to tell you a little bit about their role and how it makes them feel like a leader. So, Easton, do you want to come up first? So, this is Easton. And Easton, do you want to share what grade you're in?
I'm in fifth grade.
He's in fifth grade. Easton, can you tell us a little bit about your leadership role?
My job is a mentor in second grade. I help them read books, and sometimes we read to them. I help them sound out words and read. We get to do free time together.
Awesome. And how does that make you feel like a leader?
I feel like a leader because I get to teach younger kids how to pronounce and sound out words.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Easton. Easton is a great mentor. Can we bring up Nolan? Oh, Nolan, sorry, I didn't realize you were. So, this is Nolan, and he's also in fifth grade. So, Nolan, can you tell us a little bit about your job?
I'm on the marketing team. We help restock the Mustang Market and think of new and creative ideas for the market.
Awesome. And how does that make you feel like a leader?
It makes me feel like I have a job or, or a purpose to help the other people in the school.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Nolan. Can I bring up Hillary? This is Hillary. Hillary's in fourth grade. Can you share, what is your leadership job?
My job is the appreciation allies. I help make the school a better place and make others' days happy. And also, we get to do some fun activities, like during winter break, we did the kindness challenge.
Awesome. And how does your job make you feel like a leader?
I feel like a leader when I can help others.
I love it. Thank you so much, Hillary. And Brianna?
Welcome, Brianna.
Good job.
This is Brianna, and she's in fifth grade. Brianna, can you tell me about your leadership job?
Yeah. My job is the Mustang News Show. My segment is the Teacher Spotlight, so I get to interview teachers at Rib. I like learning more about all the teachers at Rib Mountain.
Awesome. And how does it make you feel like a leader?
It makes me feel like a leader because I get to work with so many people to see what they think and build on to each other's ideas to get a great interview. It is one of my favorite fifth grade activities.
Awesome. Thank you, Brianna. So, with that, thank you for letting us come tonight and be part of your board meeting.
I just want to challenge the rest of you to get in there and do some Genius Hours because it's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Let me just make one comment. First of all, for the young people, I can't, well done. You spoke clearly, you spoke up, we could hear you, and a person that has hearing aids is very beneficial. So, thank you very much, and keep up the good work. And I have one question. How many times does Mustang News go on air? How many times a week?
Normally, it's like once a month, but sometimes we can get it in like about two weeks.
Wow. Being an advocate of TV stations in schools, well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us.
Yes.
I looked, it was red, I knew I had to hit it. All right, agenda item number four. I would like to recognize speakers and students who wish to make a public comment at this point in time. I'm going to quickly go through, I don't think I need to go through that whole process. You'll have, you'll have three minutes, and Cassie will be identifying that. Our first speaker today is Deb. Welcome back.
I'm back. We know I'm Deb Albee, teach at Rib Mountain School, address 233215 County Road O. And I'm just here on behalf of the Wausau Education Association, just to give you an update of some things we've been doing. A few weeks ago, we hosted a winter social for all of our staff that they were all welcome to come in, we had free food, and there were fun prizes, and a little rousing white elephant gift exchange, which was quite fun, something exciting to do to end the, end the first semester. You know, we're all finishing upgrading and getting the report cards ready, and now we're all started already in second semester. Time is flying. Also, WEA is working hard with admin to help foster a smooth transition for our school closures that are coming up. I know you're very well aware of that. And as part of that, WEA is going to be going into those schools to visit with those teachers specifically, to see what we can do to help support them in the role of, as that whole process plays out. So, that's something that's going to be happening this month, or I should say, going into February, we'll be doing that. So, we're busy as always, so thank you for your support.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, yep. Our next speaker, Sarah.
So, just to make it clear, I'm doing it this way to make sure the community understands that when I'm in this chair, I am not a board member, I am simply a community member speaking for myself. So, I am Sarah Brock. I live at 126 Kent Street here in Wausau. Historically, school boards have been an example of nonpartisan representative democracy. As of 2023, 41 states required nonpartisan local school board races, a product of the belief that education governance should be separate from divisive politics. That said, we neither live nor work in a vacuum, and thanks to media, social, and otherwise, we are inundated with the stories and opinions of our communities from local to global. Whatever our views, I truly believe every one of us is here for the right reason, for the kids. The mission of the Wausau School District posted proudly on documents and web pages to advance student learning achievement and success. Today, I want to take a moment and remind us all that in order for learning to occur, students and those who serve them must feel safe. State Superintendent Underlee, in her January 22 statement, reminded us that no child decides their own immigration status, and that every child deserves the opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive without fear or discrimination. On the same day, Wausau Police Chief Matt Barnes reassured the community that, as long as you are a productive member of the community, you're not, and not breaking any laws, there's absolutely no reason to fear the police department. On January 24, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction published a dispatch, providing resources and supports for Wisconsin families who are experiencing fear and confusion regarding recent executive orders. The resource is designed for administrators, but is a reminder for all of us that learners have the right to enroll in a public school and receive an education regardless of their citizenship status, that schools have statutory responsibilities, including not turning over any personally identifiable information without written consent from the parent or caregiver, and without a warrant or subpoena which includes very specific information, and that per the Fourth Amendment, an ICE warrant does not meet this requirement, as it does not show probable cause of a criminal offense. I know from emails, comments, and conversations I have had that there is fear and misunderstanding in our community. I believe that the Board of Education of the Wausau School District has a responsibility to take a leading role in educating their families and larger community in order to mitigate that fear. I'm asking the Board to follow in the footsteps of the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, districts including Madison and Sun Prairie, and our very own police department, in making a public statement that reassures students and the Wausau community that they are seen, that they have rights, and that Wausau is a district that supports all kids, and that the Board will hold the administration accountable for doing the same. Thank you for your time.
Moving right along, agenda item number five pertains to policies. And since unfortunately, Mr. Bushman is not here this evening because he's homesick, Mr. Vigut is going to walk us through the policies and talk about any of the policies that we have questions about that have been put forward by NEOL. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, Josh, and walk us through, as we have done in the past with the superintendent.
Yep. So, I will just read through these, and if you have a question, please just stop me. All right. 0164, 2131, 2340, 312008, 5200, 5430, 5460, 5505, 5610, 5771, 6423, 754005, 7544, 8395, 8500, 8510, 8531, 8540, 8660.
Are there any questions at this point in time on any of the policies?
Okay.
You may, keep on going.
5310. I do have a question on 5310. Okay. And the main reason I have a question is this one was not a NEOL recommendation. And so, my understanding is this was staff reviewing and trying to essentially change the policy to be consistent with our practice. And so, my question is, if the policy is what NEOL recommends, do we need to change our practice to adhere to what the NEOL legal team believes our practice should be? So, if this hasn't been looked at by legal, my suggestion would be that it should be before we change it.
Okay. We can do that?
That's, I don't know, I mean, I'm just one on the board, but that would be my suggestion that rather than, I think it's good that we found out that the practice isn't consistent with what NEOL recommended, but we should find out if it has to be.
Okay.
And I think that would be the case for all of these nursing policies, if I read it correctly.
If it, if it changes the, you know, so a couple of them didn't change, like, the, you know, the practice at all, but it probably wouldn't hurt to have that looked at for each of the nursing ones. This was the main one that jumped out at me that actually made substantive changes.
Well, and again, that's why we look at these, and specifically, it's a good thing that our nurse looked at it specifically, and if we have any question, just follow up on that. So, then, was there an adjustment? Or are we, are we going with what NEOL lawyers are saying? What did you see?
Well, I don't, I don't, so the NEOL didn't, didn't suggest that we changed policy 5310 in any way. This was brought forward by the nursing review of these policies, noting that it wasn't consistent with our practice. So, my request would be that 5310 go back to administration to review with, you know, NEOL or whoever, to see if, if perhaps we just need to change our practice to be consistent with that policy. There are others like this, for example, 5335.01, that's another one where NEOL didn't bring it to us. However, if you look on there, my understanding of that is we were picking options that NEOL thought were, were okay. So, I don't know that we have to bring all the nursing ones back. If people have a lot of questions about the nursing review ones, it might be easier to separate those out and bring them back in a separate meeting instead of taking them bit by bit, but just the one that jumped out at me was 5310.
And the other one that you talked about is 5310.01?
Well, I just used it as an example, like 5335 point, or no, sorry. Which one's, yeah, 5310.01. But again, it's not a NEOL recommendation, but when I look at it, it looks like we're picking options. You know, we're selecting options that NEOL had in there, so we're still staying within the NEOL recommendation. So, those don't concern me as much when we're picking options that NEOL recommends.
Well, we can, in the motion, you know, we can pull a policy that we would like to have looked at more carefully.
Yeah, I would like that done for 5310. I don't know if anybody else has others that they'd like to have pulled.
Were there any other thoughts on that?
So, I'm hearing the preference is just pulling 5310, not all the other nerds?
At this point in time.
Okay. And I will keep going. 531001, 5320, 5330.
Josh, one question on, on 5330, the administration of the medication. If I understand right, looking at all of the, the strike through, so page three, I think it is, it says that students are prohibited from possessing or, oh, where is it? No, not the essential, the, the one where it says pain medication, including aspirin, ibuprofen, et cetera. What is the rationale? Like, I would send my kids to school with ibuprofen if they had, you know, whatever, they had a headache in the morning, I'd say, you know, take one at lunch or something like that. I was just trying to understand the reasoning for stating that something so specific in a policy.
So, I will have to admit, I would defer to the ed team, and if they don't, then we can get back to you.
It's because they might give it to somebody else. That's what I was told years ago.
That's a piece of that, but I can get clarification from my nurse team too, to further explain that.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wouldn't want to potentially penalize or punish kids who are responsible with it and truly have a need for it, you know, because of an outlier.
Ben, it's a good question, because that's been around for a long time pertaining to when students or families would like to have, say, like ibuprofen.
Right.
They would, they would send that to the nurse, and the nurse, if the child needed it, would go to the nurse to get it versus having them carry any kind of medication, even over-the-counter type of medication as well. It's common to use the nurse in that case so that there are no, say, if a person reacts to ibuprofen, you know, that could be a real problem in the school.
Sure.
And some people do like it.
Yeah.
Take it. So, that'd be the reason why it only goes in the nurse.
I don't know if there's any.
It's so good, like a Snickers bar, or a package of peanuts.
Yeah.
You know, so I, there should be a balance that we could probably find here.
And I don't know that there's, yeah, that's what I was thinking, didn't I? I don't believe there's active policing of this, but it could deter some people from, you know, wanting to help their child throughout the day, in fear like, oh, no, it's, you know, illegal, so to speak.
Well, it definitely is a lot easier in smaller schools to monitor that through the nurse than it is for bigger schools. If you're talking about high schools that are 1500 and 1600, it's sometimes very difficult.
And I'm, I'm not going to get hung up on it either way, I was just curious as to, are there some options out there, a happy medium?
Since we are pursuing clarification on the other policy, would, we like to pull this one also?
I think it would be good to hear, because maybe we could adjust, maybe it could be adjusted so that, you know, elementary students aren't allowed, right, and they have to rely on the nurse, but, you know, maybe it's cool. I don't know, something, it's like there would be a balance there.
Following up on it would be a bad idea for us.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any questions on any of those other? Okay.
Any questions whatsoever?
There's a couple more, they're called Edgar policies. 3440, 4440, 6110, 6111, 6112, 6114, and those were mostly very small language adjustments as recommended by NEOL.
If I may just respond or say for anyone watching the video, that it's very important that school boards go over the policies and update the policies, and with NEOL as the organization with lawyers to be able to give us the updates on any policies that are state or federal, and we can look at the local and they make sure that we're adjusted so that we're up to speed with all of our policies, considering the fact that school boards, it's very important for school boards to be involved, and that's one of our goals, to be involved with policy. So, just a reminder why we spend the time, and also, we have this, it's not like we're just going through numbers here and just rolling them through, but we also have the time to go through all of this before the meeting, so that if we have any questions, we can follow up. So, with that, any other questions from the board at this point in time? What I will do- What I will do is I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of those changes to attached policies, taking out fifty-three-ten and fifty-three-thirty to be reviewed. So moved? Any other follow-up questions? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry about that. Welcome, Joanna. Agenda item six, capital projects. After posting in the meeting, it was decided by the administration that this item would be postponed. And at this point, because it was here and it was going to have a motion, what I'm going to do is put a motion on the floor to postpone this to be looked at at a later date. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item seven, legal expense for second quarter twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. Josh will present and go through this listing. Kind of used to going through this listing.
Yep.
Any additional comments?
No. We do this every quarter and we do a quarter to date and a year to date. So trending significantly under last year is what I can say so far.
Are there any questions? Because there is no motion for this one. There's no, no. Okay. Agenda item eight, approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. Since the posting this agenda, this item will not be discussed. It will be brought before the board on two-ten-twenty-five. I don't believe we need a motion for that one. No, we weren't going to have one. Would we have to have a motion on this? No? Okay. Agenda item nine, presentation of financial projection model assumptions. And Josh will share many of the key variables contributing to the district's multi-year financial projection model. The model presents, represents a baseline using current information to which adjustments are subsequently made. The projection model uses budget numbers from the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five district budget with percentages and/or dollar amounts cast forward along with adjustments to create this baseline. Once these assumptions are built into the projection model, it will be presented to the board at a later date. Any additional items? Josh?
Only that most years, we look at the assumptions first and then the five-year projection. This year, because of the referendum discussion, we did look at the five-year projection first. These are the assumptions that went into that projection. I'd like to run through them very quickly and if there are any questions or feedback places the board would like to see changes, we can build that into the budget going forward. So just starting with expenditure assumptions, salaries, we do this pretty much every year, but we're assuming three percent across all employee groups for the next five years. We know that most likely that will be incorrect, but that's just the assumption that we make. We do project some teacher-related retirement savings when a new staff member comes on board. So that is factored into the budget along with some staff turnover at a average yearly rate. In terms of benefits, most of our payroll-type expenditures, we're expecting to stay about the same or step, step up minimally. Health insurance, as of right now, we're projecting five percent for this year and then four percent in subsequent years. I can tell you that our health insurance is currently running at a hundred and twenty percent and we are self-funded, so a five percent increase will almost certainly not be enough. The way we're trending right now, we will have no health insurance fund balance at the end of the year. We've talked about that previously.
Josh, that was actually going to be one of my questions, is that knowing that that number, and I'm right with you on assumptions, I get it, but knowing that that number is, is wrong by two, three times, I mean, why wouldn't we want to put something closer to reality?
So I, I think it'd be fair pushback to say we should do something closer to maybe ten percent for this upcoming year, twenty-five, twenty-six. As the board knows, we're in discussions with direct primary care providers to provide direct access to our employees. That is a cost-saving measure and a benefit enhancement to our employees. So we are exploring that as well. So in subsequent years, there's a good chance that that could help us kind of bend the curve a little bit in terms of our health insurance cost. District near us is doing this right now with a lot of success. A number of private industries are doing it as well. But I think it's fair pushback to say we might want to project a higher, higher expenditure for next year and then that will of course be built into the assumption going forward.
I also think it helps with the story for the referendum too. I mean, people need to understand this is our reality.
Yeah.
Whether it's insurance or whether it's fuel or heat, I mean, it is, it is what it is.
Right. I think that's fair feedback and we'll make note of it, include it in our-
Thanks.
I'm testing my eyes here, but most of the budgets for the salary, things that are not salary and benefits, so we call them objects three-hundred and up, we project to stay the same. Some utility costs increases, transportation, we know that cost now, we're pretty close to what it'll be, so we're projecting ten percent for next year and then two and a half percent increases in subsequent years. Insurance, no change is projected as of right now for our things such as liability, property, workers' comp. Workers' comp did go up a whole bunch the year that we're in, so it's possible that will even potentially go down. Of course, we don't know for sure, but that's part of the reason that those zero percent assumptions are in there. Fund fifty, so that's food service fund, the only change there is non-capital objects, projected two percent increases. And then fund eighty, that's our community service fund, so nothing is projected in there. But I did want to mention that we will probably be coming to the board to discuss middle school athletics in fund eighty as an option in the next couple of months. But as of right now, that assumption is not in there because nothing's been presented to the board. Open enrollment, we currently have more students open and roll out than open and roll in. We're projecting that number to stay the same and it has leveled out recently, but the cost to increase just a little bit year over year. And then the voucher program, that if you go up just a little bit, Cassie, I apologize. Vouchers are where students can enroll in private schools. And if they qualify for vouchers, then the Wausau School District, along with districts throughout the state, we are asked to tax local communities for those. The money comes to us and goes back to the state and gets distributed to those private And then in terms of revenue, the only real thing to note here is that we are projecting that three-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar-per-pupil revenue limit increase for all five years going forward. And we don't really know if that'll be that or if it'll be zero or if it'll be more. So that, that's what we know right now and that's the assumption that we built our model on.
Well, hopefully, based on what we heard from the governor at the convention, hopefully we will have not only what we have been getting, but hopefully more.
That'd be great.
Hopefully. Fingers crossed.
One comment, again, you know, talking about just the story, I think it's important for people to know that when they see this every year, all these zero percents, for the vast majority of those, that means we're cutting. The budget isn't cutting, budget's staying flat. But when the building budget is flat or this budget's flat or the purchases are flat or the capital is flat, unless we happen to have a year of deflation, which seems almost impossible to fathom, those are cuts. So every year, year after year after year, we're cutting what we can provide and what we can purchase because we're only authorizing the same amount of money that they had the year before, that they had ten years ago.
Any other feedback or questions on this presentation? Okay.
No further questions, I think. Okay. All right. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate that. All right. Moving on to the agenda item, that was all information. There's no motion needed for that. The report card presentation. Julie, thank you very much and give us an update on the report card, something that we might like to hear all the time. And I'm sorry, that's a little tongue-in-cheek because I've never agreed with the state report card anyway. Many times we are doing a lot better than what we get from a report card. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to you to give us an update.
Great. Wonderful. Thanks for the opportunity. It's great to see you all. Just a brief summary and update on, and information sharing on an initiative we have rolling at the elementary level. And that is exploring how, how we are reporting progress to parents as we move forward. So we are, we can move to the next slide. Thanks, Cassie. We had a committee that was exploring different ways that we report progress to parents that was in the district around the seventeen, eighteen school year. They made some great progress and had some great feedback sessions prior to COVID and never really came to resolution on any action, on making any changes at that time. So based on some responses and feedback that we had from our teaching staff, we decided to take a look at this and explore different ways that we're reporting to parents and options and structures we had at the elementary level. So we had a, sent out a invitation for anyone that was interested in serving on kind of an ad hoc, short-term committee and had great feedback from staff. Around twenty teachers responded to us and we had a great diversification of classroom teachers, on-court teachers, librarian. So it was a really great diverse group that came together to work through some of our outcomes that we were looking for. So really what that short-term committee was looking at, we're exploring options for how we report progress to parents, both the report card structure and our parent-teacher conference structure that we currently have. And we really were looking at the process and the structure for this year. We know that with our new curriculum and Act Twenty and some of our standards language, we'd like to take a look at some of the content, the verbiage that we have for parents to know and understand on the report card is also a task that we would like to tackle as we move into spring and into summer for future. Hopefully, we could launch some of that verbiage change next fall. But what we were really looking at is this structure or the process by which we report with parent-teacher conferences and the actual paper copy of a report card. So we decided after the committee met for two full days and did some great work together, had some great feedback, we worked with the principals as well, the elementary principals in the first semester. And we landed in a spot where we'd like to pilot kind of a semester grading process at the elementary level, starting in the second semester. Where we really focus on, we are still continuing to work with parents and partner with our families four times a year. Two would be in a written format on a report card and twice as we do now in the fall and the spring for first and third quarter would be through a personal connection in parent conference, parent-teacher conferences. So you can move to the next one. Basically, you have access to both our, our survey results in spreadsheet form and in Google Form. But the, the results of the, of the survey that we gave to our staff were that eighty to ninety percent of teachers were really still really interested in this kind of format, looking at doing semester reporting through paper copy and, and grades, so to speak, twice a year and then looking at that personal connection for first and third quarter through parent-teacher conference. So it was very highly desirable that we take a look at this and explore this option from our staff through the survey results. And many of them were referencing, you know, the work that was done several years ago that kind of was left unfinished, that we didn't get to. So there was a lot of excitement around the exploration and what we could learn from a pilot in, in this next coming semester. What the report card committee looked at was just what information is most important to include on a report card, like what our parents really, or what's important to share from a teaching and learning perspective, what makes report cards meaningful and engaging, really for both parents and for students. You know, are we involving students in that reporting process? We've got, you know, a great new pedagogy and, and the leader in me, you just heard from, from Remonton tonight, and many of our schools have been sharing those leadership strategies, those ways that we're involving students and being part of their own learning experiences and how they reflect on those. So we took a look at that piece as well. And then what's most important for us to think about when we're thinking about utilizing parent-teacher conferences in a personal connection versus how we report on things in a paper copy twice a year for both of those instances? So we did a lot of exploration and feedback gathering around those items and decided that we would land with piloting this in the second semester, which meant what do we do with those record-keeping days that are currently in our current calendar and moving forward for us in terms of preparation and how teachers utilize that greatly needed preparation time? So we would shift those parent, those record-keeping days to preparation for that personal connection on reporting out our standards and how students are doing with progress on our current standards in the first and third quarters. And we would look at those record-keeping days in the second and fourth quarters or at semesters to prepare the, the actual report cards and looking at how we're reporting progress to parents on those written formats. Can keep going, Cassie. Thank you. Is it working? Oh, we might have skipped one. Did it skip one? Yes. Grading windows. We also had lots of feedback around grading windows. We essentially, this may not mean a, a whole lot to the, those that aren't working on grades, but we had just a very short window for teachers to input grades. And if we move to a semester grading format where we're looking at those written connections and reports to parents, second and fourth quarter, or really at the end of the semesters, we wanted to open up the grading windows to allow for teachers to report out and work on standards that were taught, that are cycling back, especially our on-court teachers who have larger numbers of students that they are reporting on and also do standards-based reporting, to see what that exploration of how that works for teachers, how that creates efficiencies for them and how that also can be communicated to parents. So both the grading windows and taking a look at exploring the semester, written copies of report cards were part of the pilot. So last but not least, it was that communication. We took a long look at all of our stakeholders who are involved in reporting progress to parents and developed a parent communication that is set to go out after, as we launch the second semester here after this evening. And included with that, we felt it was really important for parents to also have kind of an FAQ. So there is a document that's linked in that you have access to, that is the parent commu- ion, communication we'll be sending out this week, more than likely, along with an FAQ that would answer questions, like what does this change for my child? Does this change the workload for my student with homework? You know, many of those questions that we felt parents, the committee helped us to come up with some of those FAQ questions that would sort of head off some of those questions at the pass, right when we sent out the parent communication about third quarter will be a time where they'll make a personal connection, not really any different than what they're doing now with their teachers. And in fourth quarter, they'd receive a written report card for their students. So hopefully, that FAQ will be really helpful in answering some of those first-line questions we anticipate that our parents may have on the shift. And what's next? The pilot will run second semester for this school year. Parent and teacher surveys will go out after the third quarter conferences. We really want to gather from parents what their experience was and what that, so we could make some changes, revisions, be responsive to their questions. We also want to know for teachers, how did things go in terms of how they felt their experience was with being able to report out progress to parents in a personal connection at third quarter? We're going to reconvene the report card committee after spring break in April and May to start taking a look at some of the feedback that we get, as well as beginning to develop some action teams that would look at some of those content areas like ELA and math and social studies, science, our on-core, and of course, our successful learner behaviors that some of our cell coaches and our leadership teams will also be working on this semester to look at verbiage for next year. So hopefully, we'll get some great feedback that we can work with and we'll take a look at what that means for next fall.
You know, I've got, I've got to edit my comment at the beginning. I get so wrapped up with the- I get so wrapped up with the report cards of the school, the state school.
Yes.
Report cards. And I was looking at some of our report cards coming up about the school and the district and that. And when I was looking at all of this, it's like, we have so many good things going on to get that information out to our parents, our community, our taxpayers, to let them know because the state report card that comes out in November does not tell all the things that you've talked about in this report card and how you're reviewing to get this information out to our parents and into our community to understand we're doing great things for our students and families.
Absolutely.
I think is a real key thing.
Great.
I just think we need to brag about that. We don't get that necessarily all the time with the state report card at a bigger area.
Right. Absolutely. Agreed.
Any other comments?
Any questions?
Yeah. I think switching from, I mean, switching from the quarterly to semester report cards for elementary, it makes sense. I think it's a good idea. It's at least good enough to explore and see how it works out. And I'm really happy to see that part of that process is also looking at the content because an ongoing frustration for elementary teachers is whenever the report cards don't align with the curriculum.
Right.
That's really frustrating.
Yes.
So at a minimum, we hopefully come out of it with report cards that are aligned with our curriculum.
Yes.
And maybe also find a better timing for report cards as well. So I think it's great. I'm glad it's happening.
Great.
Julie, one question on, is there room or do teachers have the options to provide, like, open-ended feedback? You know, not typically, I remember on report cards, I haven't seen one now in elementary in a few years, but it was, you know, Jimmy's pleasant in class and Jimmy listens well and, you know, all this other stuff. Is there any, like, free-form comments that teachers can provide back to parents?
Yes, there are. There are comments under each, most of, if not all, Deb helped me out with this, of this section. So each of the content areas and then the successful learner behaviors, there isn't a free-form version of commenting that a teacher can provide, yes.
In the behavior section too, so if...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we, during conferences, do we provide any expectation or training, like, for teachers to have those tough conversations with parents?
That's a great, great question. I think, you know, collegiate, do we offer professional development specifically on that? I can't say that we have, but at the same time, I think those conversations that principals do when they're, when they're, when we have in-service days, when we're prepping for parent-teacher conferences, certainly any one of our people services and principals certainly work with staff on those challenging conversations that have to happen, especially when, you know, we've had lots of questions coming from a particular parent or they really have questions about their student and how they're progressing in school. So it's something that I think we all can improve on is how to have those challenging conversations because they're not easy, especially when you're talking about an eight-year-old or a nine-year-old and how they're progressing.
And it seems like the feedback that I've heard is that over the years, the feedback has gotten progressively and progressively softer and we're not having those real conversations with parents. And I, I don't think we're doing anyone any favors by kind of avoiding them.
Sure.
I was always curious as to how, you know, during parent conferences these days, is it, you know, is it a point of emphasis to focus on, you know, behavior, both positive and areas, you know, for growth?
Sure. Yeah. That's a great question. I think, you know, hopefully, a parent has been communicated with prior to having to put anything challenging written on a report card. You know, we certainly would encourage.
Sure.
Teachers to be reaching out, and I know that they do put a lot of emphasis on communicating with parents before something, you know, on a report card comment would show up. So that is something we certainly coach staff on significantly is how we continue to communicate and have those intentional conversations with parents and our stakeholders. But continuing to look at how we can coach and invite those conversations so that, you know, you can be clear and kind about how students are progressing in school and take into account their developmental stages and what that means on how they're communicating that to us is definitely something that we continue to provide for our staff through, you know, our leader-in-me platforms, through some of our SCL coaching that we do, through some of our EMLSS systems that we have in place with problem-solving teams at schools. You know, the staff and the people services staff and all of us that work together to respond to kids certainly are there to brainstorm and work together to help a teacher develop those statements and help those connections with parents. But it's an ongoing process, I would say, that we all continue to grow in.
And my only other question would be, do you know approximately what percentage of elementary parents participate in the parent-teacher conferences?
I don't know specifically, but I would say it's a very high percentage. I mean, generally speaking, at each of our schools, we have a pretty high percentage of parents that attend. I can certainly gather that for you because I know principals do track that amongst their buildings, but I'm going to say, I feel pretty confident saying that it's a pretty high percentage of parents in the majority of our schools that come to parent-teacher conferences.
We had some of that data when we added the afternoon and evening ones and, because the percentage went up, but I don't remember what those percentages were.
Yeah.
I know it went up when we added the afternoon option.
If you can get it easily, that's fine. Otherwise, don't go to great lengths.
Sure.
I was just curious because to me, I think that's always an important factor is.
Absolutely.
How much are they engaging early on?
How can we connect?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, you're welcome.
One last question, following up on what Deb said, because I think that is important. A lot of times, again, is, do many of our elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, you're not aware of that, or our other administrator, but do we have a dashboard for every elementary school so that you can put that kind of data out there for parents to go and check that dashboard, to see what types of things that are happening? Because that's a, that's a selling point too, because it shows that the parents are involved, parents are involved in the education of their students. And I think any kind of data that can be shown to our community, I think, tells our community how well we're working for the benefit of our students.
Yeah.
Just a question.
I mean, the data is there for the parents that choose to access it. You can really, I mean, kids can't get away with now what we used to be able to get away with, to tell you that much, if the parent is involved. Because, I mean, the assignments are in there, whether they're behind, what they've missed, it's all there if you want to see it.
Absolutely.
But as a dashboard though, it's in one place where they can hit it and then go see everything, anything that they may want. That's been, that's, that was a big presentation at the convention this past week where they were talking about putting dashboards together at schools so that parents can go in one spot, get it all. Otherwise, you're going to a lot of different areas. Food for thought. I mean, these are just things to be thrown out there. We can always make it better for our parents and our community.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you, Julie.
Good question. Okay. Thank you.
Greatly.
We'll be back with updates.
Well done. Well done. Agenda item number 11, consolidation update. Mr. Williams, you are in the, you're in the spotlight.
Thank you for this opportunity. We decided as a theme for ours, instead of doing timelines or kind of, you know, boring project management-type updates, that we would do it as a road to success, showing a roadmap and as we progress. Go ahead, Cassie. So we've started since the vote two and a half weeks ago, our planning. First, part of that planning is Mr. Bushman asked me to be the project manager for this project. And so I'll be working with the administration, with schools, and trying to get all the tasks that we need to do, the very many of them, and put them together and have a plan and be able to communicate where we are in that plan, keep things on track, and show the progress. So we've had a couple of meetings since that time and we were able to really break things up into two parts. We want to do the full planning, but we want to take our time and make sure that we're doing it effectively and doing it well. But we also wanted to make sure that we had communication going out and knowing the first part being the people aspect, that we're working towards that goal and a parallel path. So first thing, right after the vote that Wednesday night, Mr. Bushman asked members of the administration to go to each of the schools that were impacted, both closing and receiving schools, just to take a pulse, ask a few questions, you know? Are there any questions that you have about consolidation? How can we help you? And then what can we do to help with the transition? And we're gathering that information and, or as you can see a little bit lower, we are developing an FAQ that we'll have on the website that we created as a partner to the task force. We wanted to separate what the task force did and created one for the consolidation, we're calling consolidation 2025, linking to the task force. So if there's any questions on, about what happened during that time, they can refer back to it, but we can consolidate all the information needed on this project. We did ask to have the retirement reopened and we appreciate the board's support on doing that. We did have a number of people take us up on that and look at it and put in for retirement. The last count that I had was four. And so they'll progress forward with that. We've been active in communication, not only to our staff, but also to families, just to make sure that they know that we're thinking of them as well and making sure that we continue to include them in this process. One of the things that Mr. Bushman wanted to make sure that he let people know is that we're not doing this to you, we're doing it with you. We want to make sure that we're doing this in partnership and not in a vacuum, but we're trying to find the best solutions in the situation that we're in. We did send out surveys to both staff and principals and those are being returned and the data is being collected, so we can turn that into some information and be able to report on later. We also wanted to do one of the more important things, which is identify where school locations for summer are going to be because it could impact how that works with the consolidation. So as you noticed, South Mountain and Satine are not, are not impacted by the consolidation, but Hawthorne was. And part of the reason is that we wanted to make sure that we had a summer school on the east side. But in order to think about that, we thought more time was going to be needed for the receiving schools than a closing school. And so we went ahead and said Hawthorne's the place that we want to be able to do that. It gave us a little bit more time to work on those receiving schools. So our next turns, we're going to finalize the boundaries and bring something to you for the February 10th meeting. We need that to make sure that that's really the foundation of all the next moves. So when those boundaries are finalized, then we can start some of the other planning. Coinciding with that, we'll also have the principal assignments ready and those assignments would then be communicated out to the impacted schools. And those principals will then be able to start making their own plans on how to build culture and how their work will be going forward with the consolidation. As such, as more questions come in, we'll continue to communicate through the FAQs and we'll continue on with a timeline. Cassie? Thank you. On the horizon, these are just some things that we know that we have to plan in the future for. We're going to finalize the building maps. And what that means is just taking a look at each building and where classes are going to be placed. And then that'll help us also then plan and project for any changes that those classrooms may need and what updates are needed for, say, Lincoln, so that we can plan those out. But we want to make sure that we know the sectioning first and the boundaries before we could really finalize those and then make sure the principals have some say in that as well. We also have the staff assignments. That's going to be something that's going to be looked at sooner rather than later because we know that's the greatest apprehension for our staff. So we want to make sure that we do due diligence in understanding how that will impact and where it will be, but then give some comfort to people that they know sooner rather than later. We'll start developing the transportation plans and moving details as well. We also want to make sure that we honor the schools that are closing. This has had an impact of great emotional needs for people, not only that are at the schools now, but also those alumni that have gone there. And we want to make sure that we take time and recognize that. We're also going to be collaborating with those merging schools to try to build culture, build the staff and have them come in and make them feel comfortable as they integrate. And also for the students, give them an opportunity to maybe go visit those schools and do it in a welcoming way and then have students help students. Then one of the other things that we need to make sure that we do is finding the new home for red granite, whether it be to Texas or some other location, we want to make sure that we have that sooner rather than later. And that's what we have for right now. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from board?
Just a comment, Ralph. First, the feedback that I've gotten has been very, very positive. A, I think because you are leading this and organizing it, I think that is fantastic. The other thing is that the approach is leading with people first. The success of this is not going to be dependent on a new gymnasium or new air conditioning or bus routes. It's going to be dependent on the people that are involved. And everything that I've seen and heard that, that has been heard loud and clear, and I think that there's been a great foundation set for success on this. So thank you for all you guys have been doing. Lot of work ahead, but I'm optimistic this is going to go well.
Thank you.
I think that sums it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, agenda item 12. Committee will direct administration on the action to take with the empty buildings after consolidation. I would imagine you'd want to lead us a little bit with that, Josh?
Yeah.
What you're talking about.
One-minute overview. So after the consolidation vote, we've had people, individuals throughout the community reach out to us about every building that would be closed next year in terms of purchasing it. So what we're looking for is some direction from the board on, can we have those preliminary discussions of what that might look like in terms of what we do with those buildings going forward, with the understanding, of course, that any update, anything that would happen would be brought in front of the board.
I think what they're looking for is should the administration move forward in talking with individuals that are interested in the buildings? Are there any comments that you'd want to put out there that the administration should be considering as they talk with these entities?
Are you planning to hire someone? I know you've used a Realtor in the past. Are you going to hire a Realtor and really market it?
I believe.
Yeah.
That'd be best.
I mean, I think it makes sense to start that process. I know we're a ways away from being able to actually move forward with anything like that, but there's no reason not to start it. Right? I mean...
Would everyone agree that we put a motion out there that the administration move forward in initiating the early stages of this selling process by getting a Realtor involved? If that's what the board would like, or would you like administrators, the administration to do that? I mean, it can be done either way. You could have the administration deal with it or you could have a Realtor come in and deal with it. I've seen it done both ways.
We've already had initial contacts with multiple people on multiple properties.
That is correct. There's multiple interested parties.
So creating, you know, some basic time, some basic details, what we would want to see about the properties from the buildings, some kind of purchase price, hopeful purchase price. Right? I see that coming from staff. I don't see that coming from outside yet. Also, since it's already interest, there are other ways to complete real estate transactions without Realtors. But you're going to have to decide if staff can work with a third party and do that. We want to maximize whatever we can get from our properties.
It's pretty common when you hire a Realtor, if you have parties that were already interested before you hire the Realtor, to exclude them. So that if the Realtor finds someone who is willing to pay more, they get the sale and they get their percentage. But if you sell it to the person or group, whoever it was that was already interested before, we're not, we don't pay a Realtor fee on the person who had already expressed interest before. I assume we could probably work something like that out. So we're kind of getting the best of both worlds. We're not paying a fee on people who have already expressed interest, but if the Realtor can find a better deal, great.
Right. And a lot of times you'll pay, you can pay a discounted fee because of they're taking time to market a property, right? And if you get...
they're taking time to market a property, right? And if you get five buyers in and it goes to the one that they already had come to the table, then it's discounted substantially.
Yeah, we should work something out like that where we can
For sure.
Yeah.
And also just being aware of not adding more things onto the plate of our staff in terms of marketing expectations and everything else.
Well, any other questions on this side? No. Initial motion I would suggest would be to have the administration move forward in the process of looking at selling the buildings, and if they need a Realtor to be a part of it, let them make that decision and move forward. That is a motion. Any follow-up questions?
Are you required by statute to have a RFP at some point as part of the process?
We will find out. We haven't gone down the road at all yet, so.
I don't, I don't recall we did when we sold
East?
No.
The
School Forest Land or also the
Long, kindergarten, pre-k.
Oh, AC Kiefer.
AC Kiefer.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain.
Thank you.
What's that?
I'm going to abstain on that.
You're going to abstain?
Yes, because of the Realtor, potential Realtor.
Statue, please. Thank you. Okay. With that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm calling to order a special meeting of January 27th. Agenda item two already, approved consent agenda, appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements. I'm seeking, okay. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Approved the 2025 calendar action. That goes since posting this item is no longer being brought forward. It will be brought forward on 2/10/25. Agenda item number four, request for closed session for some two state statutes, administrator contract review, statute 19.851C. I'm seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sarah Brock.
Yes.
John Creacher.
Yes.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli.
Yes.
Jane Roche.
Yes.
Corey Sellers.
Yes.
Lance Trollope.
Yes.
Jim Boucher.
Yes. Thank you. We will meet upstairs. Okay.